Let's convene this meeting at 6:04. Mr. Kane, can you lead us some more pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just want to call the roll.
Mr. Merrill Gay.
Here.
Mr. Nicholas Mercier.
Here.
Dr. Violet Minis Simms.
Here.
Ms. Monica Dawkins.
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane.
Here.
Ms. Diane Lay.
Here.
Ms. Annie Parker.
Here.
Ms. Diana Reyes.
Here.
Ms. Nancy Rodriguez. Ms. Gail Sanders Connolly.
Here.
And let's start with a moment of meditation. Okay, and we have one person signed up for public participation. Adam Gopkin.
Good evening, everyone. Many of you, I recognize you from being on the board a couple of years ago. But me and my friends, we just came here to come and thank and congratulate Dr. Tucker for everything she's done for us personally and for the programs at the high school. So we're part of a club called Educators Rising, and last year, we were, we took the wonderful opportunity of going to Dallas, Texas, and it was funded by the school district, so we participated in a national conference for people who want to be teachers. And Dr. Tucker was one of them that came on the trip with us, and we just want to thank her for everything she did to be a personal inspiration in supporting the ideals and what we stand for and that we want to come back to the school district and teach here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Anyone else who'd like to speak? Last time, anybody else like to speak? You could just say your name and...
Sure, my name's Matt Marino. 20 Karen Drive. Been there my whole life, if that's the next question. I'm sure that everybody here actually does know who I am. I've been very vocal over the last couple of weeks. I'm sure most of you believe that I'm here to argue on behalf of a hiring decision for a football coach, and I want to assure everybody that is far from the truth. I don't need to advocate for anybody. People that have applied for that job, their records speak for themselves. I will say, as a parent, as an alum, and as a city resident who elected to stay and raise a family here, I could not be more disappointed in how the school district and the Board of Ed handles business. I've reached out multiple times via email just to start a conversation, not to cause any trouble. I've tried to make it very clear that that was my purpose, and I was left with nothing. I know that I'm not the only one. There's other people in the room who have tried the same thing. And I'm just curious, moving forward as a parent with multiple children, what is to keep me here at this point? If I were to ask, why should I stay here and keep my kids in this district? That has given so much to me, that turned me into an all-state football player, a captain of the baseball team, honor roll student, brought me to college, got me a college degree, and landed me the job that I'm so grateful for now. What is to keep me here with how the school has performed or the district has performed over the last couple of years? I'm just curious, because people are trying to reach out, they're trying to seek middle ground, and they're getting nowhere, it seems. And those of us that have elected to stay have to have conversations with our peers who have elected to leave, and they all turn back and say the same thing that they've left because of the school district. So I'm just curious at this point, what answers are we going to give, and what am I going to give to my kid? My five-year-old, who I bring to high school football games, high school basketball games, high school baseball games, who only knows New Britain High School and thinks it's the greatest school in the state, what am I supposed to say to him when we have to up and move because of the schools here? I'm just curious. And maybe, I don't know, this is the first time where I've spoken in front of the board or the district, I don't know if it's standard practice to get an answer or not, but that's just where I'm standing right now, and I'd like to know, to be honest. Thank you.
So just to answer that question, the format of this is that the public gets an opportunity to speak.
It's like the Common Council.
Yeah. And we don't respond.
Understood.
Mr. Gay.
Just so people know, though, because we do have an email address that gets forwarded to all the boards, and I have not seen any email from the public come to it lately, but it's BOE@csdb.org, and that gets forwarded...
I have a question, I know what it is. Ms. Sarah, Mr. Gay, and Mr. Foreign all had emails from me, they were CC'd on.
I'm just saying, for the general public's information, that gets sent to the full board so that all of the board is able to receive that, just for people's information.
So I'll go with the second one, if I can.
So my name is Alfred Keles, 529 Corbin Avenue. Anything else? It's my first time here, so I know some board members, I know some administrators, sort of say. I second to what Matt's saying, because I'm also tied to a lot of the things that he's saying. I have a five-year-old. I've tried reaching out on numerous occasions, so if what you're saying is true, then we've yet to get responses when it comes to a lot of things. Outside of what Matt is kind of going with, I'm actually going to talk about the hiring of the next head football coach. So, just a little bit backdrop of my story, and I'm assuming you guys can't ask any questions backwards and whatnot, so we'll be able to have a little bit of transparency, but I am a New Britain kid. I'm a product of New Britain. Came in from Puerto Rico when I was six, probably been to every single elementary school, every middle school, and managed to stay at New Britain High School. I had Mr. Foreign as my housemaster at the time. And just to talk a little bit about my experience and kind of what I've went through as a New Britain resident, as a New Britain kid. Not knowing what I wanted to do much in life, like most kids, we play sports, we, you know, we do a lot within the community to try to, you know, get by and just kill time, sort of say. Went to high school, was pretty good in sports, so I decided to play every sport possible, played basketball, played football, played baseball, did a little bit of everything. Didn't really have much guidance, being a single, actually four, single mother of four kids, didn't have much guidance when it came to what it is that I wanted to do in life outside of sports, high school, and even college. I couldn't even see that far. Till my sophomore year, there was a new hiring in New Britain. And I remember the first day at New Britain High School, Coach Cocker came in and said, "Listen, this is the program, this is what we're doing." And he built something, okay? Within those two years, okay, I was fortunate enough to be under him, under his wing, one of his former players, a student athlete. Not only did I not have any plans being a sophomore, I ended up going to school, I ended up going to college, kind of built me into the man that I am today. I've been coaching here for over, a little under eight, eight to nine years. Went off to play in college, came back, I coached. And a lot of the, some parents within the community itself would say that we ran a good program, okay? So it kind of helped me into the man that I am today. I don't, we don't have much guidance when it comes to the city. We don't have much question answering. There's a lot of rumors, a lot of speculations, a lot of different things going on. But I can only speak on my behalf as far as like the experience that I've gone through, okay? I don't know where I would have been, okay? I didn't have a father figure. I didn't have someone pushing me. I didn't have someone saying, "There's more to this than just sports." Okay? We hear a lot of people talking about, "It's more than wins and losses, it's more than just sports." That's maybe your cases. But that kind of got me to go to school, that paid for me to go to school somewhat, okay? That opened doors for me to coach. Just because it wasn't for someone else, it doesn't mean it wasn't for one. I came back and now I give back to, I coach in the community, over 10 years. So I don't understand when people say, and I hear this a lot, "It's more than wins and losses, it's more than just the one specific hiring." I can only talk about the one person that I know, because it's gotten me where I am now, okay? I've been to so many different, so many different approaches when it come, when it came to this process, because I, you know, I was contemplating whether I was even going to come here. I've wrote in emails since my son has gone to school, he's in kindergarten, and I have gotten zero responses. So a part of me was like, "Why am I going to go here?" Voice my opinion to fall on deaf ears, because that's kind of like what's been happening. So to piggyback a little bit what Matt's saying, I am concerned, you know? Before I bought my house in New Britain, I contemplated, "Why do I want to live in New Britain?" Okay? What's the perks of living in New Britain? For my child, not for me, okay? When it comes to the school districts, I don't even know where we place. When it comes to how many kids are in my son's class, he's probably at 28, 30 kids in kindergarten, one teacher, okay? The only perks that I would look at is, hey, I got a nice little house within my own community at a decentable price. Outside that, what else is there that I have? When I've been reaching out to you guys for guidance, I've reached out to my son's school for some guidance, he's only been in there a few months, but there's still some red flags that I see. And there's nothing wrong with a parent trying to be proactive and trying to figure out what's going on for their child. I have, I'm lucky enough and fortunate enough to be able to have a voice, a little platform. Like I said, I coach hundreds of kids in this community, okay, in over a 10-year span. I ask all my kids, when they, we usually get them when they're, you know, eight-year, till they hit 13. I ask the kids, "What, how's high school doing? How's New Britain High School doing? How's this doing?" And they say, "Hey Coach, you know, everything's good, you prepared us pretty well, but now we're here, and we're dealing with a whole different aspect." And I said, "I get it, it's supposed to happen that way." But they kind of get lost in the sauce, sort of say, okay? I've had hundreds of kids, not many of them have gone on to the university level. That's a problem, that's a big problem. Whether it's D1, D2, D3, I don't care what school it is, as long as you're going from high school to some form of college, that's what we're looking for. That's all we're looking for as parents. So, I know I've been rambling a lot when it comes to, you know, this whole process. Like I said, I'm real concerned with what Matt said, because I have a five-year-old that, you know, that I've been getting some kind of answers. But more or less, I am also here to talk about, you know, the whole elephant in the room situation, because I'm sure it's in here. We don't want to talk about it, but it's the elephant in the room. So it may fall on deaf ears, I can only tell you from my experience and hundreds others, just not a lot of people have the courage to actually come here and speak in front of you guys. Better alone, people don't answer emails or have face-to-face conversations, and to get up here and speak in front of our town, city officials is, could be a little intimidating, sort of saying. So, thank you guys for the opportunity, I hope I do get some answers back. I hope someone sees me in the streets here somewhere and could explain something to me. I don't know why we're making this into this whole secrecy thing or us versus them mentality, but we're New Britain residents, right? And we're just looking for some answers, so. Thank you for your time. I wish I could answer some questions, because it would help, a little give and take, because I don't know what you guys know. But, yeah, thank you.
Anybody else who wants to speak? Looks like you have one more person. Okay.
My name is Jose Torres. I live on 65 Radcliffe Drive, and I am a lifelong resident of New Britain, born and raised here. I have two kids in the school system here, and I'm going to piggyback a little bit off of what Alfred and Marino both said, you know? Some of the concerns is, yeah, you know, the hiring process here for the coaches. Just in experience, I'm in the same year and category as Alfred. We graduated in 2003. You know, I know Mr. Foreign, he was my housemaster, and I'm going to address two things here. One thing is, the importance of what sports is to this town, and then also how important it is that we listen to the community when it comes to the education of our kids. I have two kids, one is in honors at the high school, doing pretty well. Then I have another kid in middle school who's doing well, he's in honors, but it's sometimes a struggle for more my middle school kid than my high school kid. The reason being, one, the classes are a little overcrowded. So I know, as a parent to a pre-teen and a teenager, it's frustrating, and sometimes you lose your patience. And I could only imagine, on a teacher's behalf, I'm giving you my kids, plus 20 other parents are handing over their kids as well, and we're trusting you that you educate them on things we don't know. But then, what's going on is, is I feel that my kids are not taking in what's going on, not so much of their attention, attentiveness span, if not is how crowded it is in the room, and they feel left behind. Now, I'll advocate for my kids, I can't advocate for everybody else's kid, because everybody else's kids is different, okay? But what I've learned is also, when kids join sports programs here in the city, their high school, their middle school, their elementary, Pop Warner, Little League, when you have good coaches, you develop good kids. Almost all the time, when you have a really good coach, and he can, he may not know the sport well, but when you have a responsible, consistent coach that has a game plan, you're going to receive the result in a kid's responsibility at life. I've been coaching since I was 19-years-old in this city, and I've, not the best coach, but I give everything that I can to these kids. Because some kids grow up, people like me and Alfred, with no dads in the household, it's just mom and multiple siblings, and it gets a little, you know, overwhelming when you're kids. So now, when we tie into sports and we say, "Well, let's give back to our community, let's give them a decent coach," whether it's, we want to address it, you know, Mr. Cocker or another coach, the thing is, we want to know what's going on with the coaching process, with the hiring process, because a lot of our kids are going to go to the high school. Alfred's kids are going to go to the high school. Mr. Mercedes' kid is going to go to the high school. We want to make sure that there's a good program, because when kids get overwhelmed with classwork, their escape is sports. My escape in particular was the marching band. I'm a band person, I'm a drummer, that's what I did. And back then, the football team and the marching band had the closest connection like you wouldn't believe. I'm the VP of the PMA presently right now, and I can tell you from my experience, it's pretty terrible, the relationship the band has with the football team. And I'm not trying to knock that every coach is bad, but sometimes that attitude starts from up top, from leadership. In my experience with the coaching staff that we had back from 2000 to 2004, they made sure and they went out of their way, they established school pride. If kids have a good coach, a good program, good leaders in position, they're going to respond in every other aspects. So I'm here with the concern of making sure that at least we're kept in the loop as a city, as a community. I mean, listen to the parents, we're out here like crying, you know, trying to get some answers. It may not go on the answer that we want, but we just want to know what's going on, like, we're here concerned about our kids. I got a two-year-old nephew that's on his way, two more years, three more years, he's in elementary school. That's going to fly by really quick. What do we have established here? That's what I really want to know, what's the game plan moving forward? Do we have something for these kids? Do we have the right leaders? Are we making the correct decisions as a community? Can you listen to what we're saying? Don't, you don't have to do what we're saying, but listen to us. Talk to us, return our emails, because I myself have sent multiple emails. I have that BOE on file, and I'm still waiting for responses from questions about, "Why are my son's classes overcrowded? Why there's only one security guard at Slade Middle School with an attendance of over 800 kids?" Come on. There's no safety there for those kids with one guard versus 800 kids. These are some of the things, I can go on and ramble, but I don't want to take up any more time, we all got to go home and have dinner as well. So, you know, thank you for hearing me out. Please listen to the community, we're here talking, we're here concerned, we want some answers. We might not get what we want for the answers, but at least let us know, keep us in the loop, you know? It's kind of like, help us help you, you know? You want something from us, we'll give something back, but let's work together.
For coming out, I do want to mention that tomorrow evening, we have a community conversation, which is intended to be a more interactive back-and-forth conversation as opposed to this formal meeting. And the next piece on the agenda is Superintendent Sarah's report, and I've asked her if she could just review the process for hiring, because for us, it seems like it's a fairly normal process, and I think it looks kind of okay from the outside. So I'm going to ask her to just kind of go over that and where we stand in that.
Oh, I might have to...
Ready?
Yeah, yeah, I'm ready. I hope I get this exactly right. We did, it was FOI'd, as far as the process goes. We were following the board policy, the process, and we even went more than that, because we understood that there was a very big interest in the community around being a part of it. And you're right, what gets frustrating is, we said, "Okay, here's the process, we're going to invite two community people in, here's how we're going to do it." And you're right, sometimes people don't like the results of how it went down, but it is what it is. We actually took all the 23 people in the community that were wanting to be a part of it, those names, we fairly just drew them out of a bag, and I know that people made fun of that, but I said, "I don't know a more fair way to do that." Because all community members have a similar voice at the table. Last Thursday, Wednesday, sorry, last Wednesday, there was a committee of nine or 10 folks, Ms. Connolly sat on as a Friends of Football representative, and they went through 13 candidates. From those 13 candidates, six candidates will go around for the second round of interviews. The second round of interviews will be next week. And this includes also a lens on academics, if the candidates that are being pushed through have certification as teachers. Because what we don't want to do is hire someone just for coaching, and if we're hiring them as a teacher as well, we need to ensure that they have an understanding or they are qualified teacher coming through the process. So next week, and I can't answer if those six candidates, actually, Kristen, wherever she just went, oh, there you are, were the six candidates notified today?
They were. Several I had to leave messages because I didn't answer, but most of them were actually contacted.
Okay, so six people will go to the next level. That level will include the superintendent, myself, Mr. Foreign, Dr. Tucker. Help me to remember who else I have on that second, oh, Mr. Pierce from the high school, sorry about that, and another one of our associate principals from the high school. Depending on their certification, meaning their teaching certification, we'll make the recommendation from there, we'll bring it down to probably two candidates, and then the final decision will be mine. That is the way our board policy reads, that's the process for hiring. So, together, we will interview, there will be six of us interviewing six people coming through. Again, if they're a teacher, there will be teacher-specific questions. I know that not all of the six people going forward have a teacher certification. So, that's the process. We should be bringing it to our board by the April board meeting. That will be April 2nd, I believe. That's the process. I just want to go back to my notes, because I was taking notes while you were speaking. Mr. Gay did announce every month that we do have community conversations. We broadcast those, we put them on our Facebook page, I send out connected robocalls to parents telling them that we have these community conversations. That's a time to come. If you have issues, if you have concerns, come, or email us that. I have a concern, I want to bring it forward. As far as answering questions around the process, we were FOI'd, and we did provide all of the information to everyone, and I did see that it went up on Facebook. What I'm telling you now is very similar to what was out on the Facebook page. I will say, we have followed the process throughout, our board policy, and I did list our board policies as well. When asked, those were accessible to people to just see the steps involved in hiring. And we have followed that process, and then some by including additional people, because we understand that it's important to the community. I don't think any one of us disagrees that it isn't an important issue, it is important. And Alfred, and I just remember you from Smith School, okay? And you look the same. I'm going to say that right now. I tell Iris I said hello. But when the process is going, oftentimes, you're not going to start answering individual questions, because then you start to ruin the process, or jeopardize the process being followed. I invite you to come and sit, I have to look at my calendar, it may not be tomorrow, or the next day, and I won't answer any of the questions you have. I just did a quick rundown to see if you had ever emailed me about class sizes or anything. I don't have that. That doesn't mean you don't, sometimes things go to spam. But I am always available. I will say, my door is open for people if they want to come and talk, I don't mind. Sometimes I can't answer you right then, because it is in the middle of a process, and it could potentially ruin that process. Was there anything else you want me to address that I maybe didn't write down? I would like to ask you, but I can't, so. Anything else around that?
Issues of class size or related to the budget.
Oh, oh. So the class size that you speak of, I think it was Alfred.
Yeah.
Our youngest learners, our kindergartners, there is no class size at 30, I promise you that. That we monitor very closely.
Seems like it.
Yeah, I know. It does to the teachers too sometimes, right? And, but we have worked really hard over these years, and it is attached directly to the budget and funding, it just is. So that's always our goal, it's our target, always to keep class sizes as low as we possibly can. And we do care about every student, not every student's going to be sports, some are going to be musical, some are going to be other, it doesn't matter. We try to find a space and a place for our kids here in New Britain, and so we do value what you're saying, we are hearing you. And I'm going to move on, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Just to my boring superintendent report? But I do want to flip first to, I said, we had a lot of good, a lot of good things this month. I'm going right to partnership now, I do want to do a couple of shout-outs. First, thank you to Nelva Marquez Green and the Anna Grace Project. I think she called me two days in advance to say she had 50 tickets to go see To Kill a Mockingbird on Broadway. And thanks to Mr. Pierce and all the teachers, I know Beth Masadorian, and several teachers at the high school rallied quickly, found the 50 students to go, and they were on their way to New York City, and had a great day, a really good experience, so thanks to her for that. And then also, just three of our staff members spent last Saturday down in Newtown. Charlotte Bacon was one of the young girls that was killed in Sandy Hook, and they were having her 14th birthday citywide celebration. And Melissa Bate, Kristy Tilton, and Ryan Langer spent the entire day there, and they actually, they did a great job. We have a very strong partnership with Charlotte Bacon, they have books that they've published, and so, just to our staff, who goes above and beyond, and they go and they spend their weekends there. Our Friday night ballers, which is a combination of about 70 Pulaski and Slade students, these are students who struggle with attendance, who struggle sometimes with behaviors. We have a Friday night program, this is our second year now doing it, at the YMCA on Friday nights, and it's really to build teamwork, camaraderie, and they all went off yesterday to a game at Quinnipiac College. I think Janice Pina was one of the chaperones to go, she is there every Friday night with our kids at the YMCA. Y, yeah, the YMCA. So that's up and running and doing really well. We had a great career fair on, last week, I can't remember the day, I think it was Friday. We had 40 community partners coming in, we had 350 of our kids who go to the academies. We have four great academies at the high school, and all of them are, we had some great partners there, and I have to say, this is our seventh year, I believe, Sandra, if you're here, scream out, yes, seventh. Our seventh year, this was the best year yet, watching our kids dressed professionally and just acting engaged, or were engaged with the partners, and just making those connections and networking for jobs, potential jobs. So that was really good. One of our really busiest tables was the fire chiefs table, looking for recruits into the fire department, so that was, that was really promising too. I'm going to skip over that. One thing that I was really excited about is, we are, the Manufacturing Engineering and Technology Academy is officially recognized as a quality pre-apprenticeship program by the Connecticut Department of Labor, which is amazing. And so I hats off to Sandra Sandford and Jason Howey. They met with Colin Cooper from Connecticut's first-ever chief manufacturing office to discuss potential state funding and advocate for New Britain Academy programs. So we should be seeing dollars hopefully coming from the department, that department of the state, which is a really great thing. And we continue with Jason Howey, who is helping us raise that million that we need as we work on making our best-in-class manufacturing academy at the high school. So that's pretty exciting stuff. I wanted to just give you a quick update operationally, preschool project update. I wanted to just give you a quick update operationally, preschool project update. We have kind of two avenues going right now. We have submitted for Chamberlain renovation. We have submitted our application that is going forward, right? And talking to Mr. Moore, who is retiring in April, so we're getting all we can out of him now, the possibility of maybe having a preschool attached to Chamberlain as well. So it would be a pre-K through five. We've talked about that as a board. We are just looking at the feasibility now to see if that's possible, what that would do for us. I mean, we've got, right now, in our city, we educate 1,200 preschoolers. We are responsible for about 500 of that 1,200. So 700 are happening out in the community, 500 are happening here. And we would like to reclaim a portion of Roosevelt, which is not really an early learning center, and focus, have an early learning center just for little ones. And if we can, if we have the space at Chamberlain, I know Mr. Sanchez in our corner is working really hard at ensuring that we get a reimbursement rate that is better than what we typically have. So that's one of our avenues. The second avenue, we're continuing our partnership with CCSU. We had a, we have a committee that's formed, two representatives from the Office of Early Childhood sit on the committee with us. Mr. Gay does, Diana does as well. And we had our really first, I would say, working meeting to explore the possibility of securing a location in town. Dr. Toro, CCSU president, is looking for a location now for a partnership lab school with CCSU and the Consolidated School District of New Britain for a second preschool setting. If we were to try to house all of our preschoolers in one building, it would be way too many, right? You need small settings with these children. So if we can take care of our 500 or 600 little ones and have brand-new facilities that are made for preschool students, that's optimum. So we are working on that. That continues to move along. We do have plans for next Saturday. I just wanted to make sure you all remember next Saturday, okay? We have invited construction advocacy professionals and Moser Pylon, Nelson Architects for just a little bit of time to talk about the long-range planning that we are looking to do and just around capital projects. Proactive planning for potential impact of the coronavirus. On our Facebook page tonight is a letter to all of our families. We do have hard copies of the letters that are going to be sent out tomorrow in multiple languages. They're being copied now, they'll be distributed to the buildings tomorrow. So all families will have a hard copy. And I'll put out a connected call, too, to let them know. Met with the mayor's office today around that as well. And we have a good working relationship to, with the public health department here as well. So plans are in place. We're meeting every week to make sure we are on top of the attendance, washing hands. We have ordered and are supplying the buildings with more soap, additional soap, and also cleaners that are still approved, but maybe a little bit stronger than the green ones that we typically get. But, and then I think that's it. The rest, you can read. I do have Sarah Harris here, if you don't mind, because I asked her to come up to just talk a little bit about, I really wanted to highlight some of the positives that's happening throughout our city. It's been a hard month, I think, for everyone in the community and here at the board and everywhere. So I just thought I would bring her up to share a little bit of good news at her school.
Good evening. Last week, I was contacted by the State Treasurer's office, that Sean T. Wooden, who's the new state treasurer, that he wanted to come visit Vance. Vance had been a top school for CHET. That means we had one of the most, the amount of essays and drawings by our students kindergarten through fifth grade. So we were awarded $500 last year and two years before that as well. So they wanted to recognize us, so they came. He came for a visit, was extremely engaging with our students. He went into three classrooms, sat down with students, talked to them about what their hopes and dreams were, what do they want to do after college. And in grades four and five, this year, for CHET, it's actually about what are you going to do to help your community?
Do you know if people know what CHET stands for?
So, CHET is obviously the Connecticut Education, which all families can start CHET accounts for their 529, 529, and for college. And we've had several winners from Vance who have been individual winners that have won $500 into their CHET accounts, as well as iPads and books. And kids have been recognized. I think we've had about 12 winners over the last five years. In addition to that, we've been a top school. So Treasurer Wooden came to Vance, as well as Scott Haney. And Scott Haney is going to feature us on Better Connecticut. When I get that date, I'll send that to Nancy in the next two weeks. So it was extremely exciting for all of us at Vance because during the month of February and beginning of March, the entries are due at the end of March. It's really a whole school kind of effort to work on your essays in school and to enter the contest and to get our families to sign off on it. And that's the biggest thing, is getting the families to be engaged through this. So it was just a great way to highlight some, you know, what's going on in school and what are some of our students' ideas for what they want to be. It was awesome. We had two kindergartners who want to be meteorologists, so Scott Haney was extremely excited about that. And we had some other students share what are some of their ideas for helping the homeless, some ideas for opening up a hair salon and giving out free haircuts to people who can't afford them. So there were some wonderful ideas circulated during their visit. So we were obviously ecstatic, as well as Treasurer Wooden was very impressed by our students and shared that he wanted to come back when he had more time. So he was able to go into three classrooms, and Scott Haney was there for a couple hours. So we were pretty excited. So we are looking forward to seeing what that feature will look like on Better Connecticut, which is aired actually at 4:00. So once we know, we will share that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted, and I couldn't make it there because we were at the high school, the Attorney General and the mayor and several reporters talking to Ms. Hudema's class on the, just getting feedback from the students about vaping or Juul. That's about all I can tell you about that. I don't know too much about that. And then today, we had Mr. Gay, we had Commissioner Cardona, Lieutenant Governor Susan Biasiewicz at Chamberlain, where we had a...
Assembly.
Assembly. I was going to say a rally. It was kind of a rally. It was kind of exciting, on the importance of the census and being counted. And so our little ones, three grade levels at Chamberlain will be on a, they're probably on the website already saying, "We count."
Lieutenant Governor's website, yeah.
Right. So, anyway, we've had a busy couple of weeks.
Yep. Okay, committee reports. Start with personnel?
Okay, for personnel, we, we had some job descriptions for, let's see, where are my notes? Yeah, for director of personnel and talent development that we are bringing forth tonight. Also, we did one for manager safety and communications and director of facilities. Those are just the three that we did.
Those are all pertinent because...
Thank you. Dr. Tucker.
Dr. Tucker has just taken a job with the state, Department of Education. Chief Talent Officer for the state of Connecticut. Mr. Moore is retiring and planning what sounds like an amazing trip to Alaska. So we took that opportunity to update those two job descriptions, and that will be coming forward. Okay, so.
Finance. We were busy, 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 busy. I always like to start with the donations. We are taking in, oh, no, I just went into silent mode, but a couple thousand dollars in donations. We are actually, we went out to bid for something that's near and dear to my heart for redoing the gymnasiums. Yes, makes me happy. Give me one second. A lot of tech stuff. He's not here. Oh, there he is. A lot of tech stuff on there. I don't have it in front of me. Here. Ah. Oh, à la quotes. Oh, I don't care about that. There's just, there's a lot of tech stuff. We usually put that stuff on the consent agenda. If I haven't seen it, I usually pull it off and make them talk to me about it. Otherwise, I'm excited about the gym renovations, like the new golf cart for the high school, the donations. It'd make my heart sing. No, I think that is it, yeah.
Okay. And curriculum did not meet, so personnel, I mean, policy?
Yep. Several policies, we're just, it's the endless cycle of revising and making sure the policies are clear and up to date. So we looked at a number of the hiring policies and just made sure that what is written in our policy is also matches the practice. We clarified some things around the hiring of coaches because the way it was written, I can understand why there was some confusion around it. So we have some revisions that just help clarify that the way it was worded before, that is the floor of what is required for hiring of head coaches. But oftentimes, depending on the head coach position, there may be more involvement from the community, things like that. So we just updated the policy to reflect that discretion that the superintendent always had. We just put it in the policy. We also just looked at updating a lot of our older policies that hadn't been looked at in a while regarding professional staff development and also updating our policy on students who are pregnant, married, or parents, and that just hadn't been looked at and updated in a while. So we constantly are looking to get those older ones updated, as well as everything that changes at the state level. So a lot of that is on our agenda for tonight. And going forward, if there are any specific policies board members that come across that want us to address, please let me know. We can move it to the front of the list. Otherwise, we just keep churning away.
Okay, and are there new board reports?
Just quick, there's a couple of you guys out here that on March 7th, you might want to head to New Britain High for the weightlifting competition and cheer the kids on. It's always fun, it's always smelly, but it's, it's a good time. We do have Mamma Mia on the 20th. And on a more personal note, I appreciate the comments about athletics in our school because it's near and dear to my heart. And I'm a firm believer, we can save kids through athletics. So it is important when it comes down to hiring coaches. That is all.
Okay.
I just also wanted to say, I do appreciate the people of the public who come out and speak to us. We do listen, and we do try to respond as best we can. And again, just for information, on the district website, you can also find the contact information for every elected official. It's both our phone numbers and our emails right through the website. I really try to get back to any emails I receive from the public. And sometimes, that's me responding directly to the concern that's raised. But a lot of time for the board members, that's also us facilitating putting you in touch with the people who are district employees who handle it. Because really, the board is not the day-to-day, we don't run the district on a day-to-day level, but a lot of times, we may know who it needs to go to. I had a parent reach out to me through Facebook regarding something with transportation, and I was able to put them in touch with Mr. Halick, who's our transportation manager. So that's kind of what the board often does. So I always appreciate those who come out and speak. I try to get back as quick as I can to any emails I get from the community because I do think it's important that we be responsive. That's why we've tried to do a lot more with community forums over the past couple of years. That's why we've tried to move our meeting schedule so that we go around to the different schools as well, and we're not just always down here. And like I said, I don't think any of us really are, you know, it's sometimes hard to connect just because this is something that is, as elected officials, this is very much a volunteer thing for us. We all have our own jobs and our own families as well, but we do take it very seriously. And we look to help address these problems. And sometimes, we miss the connection, but we really do try. So I appreciate those who took the time to come out. And I hope, I hope I hear from some of you and I get a chance to talk with you outside of this venue.
Okay, are there any other board reports? Okay, well, just picking up on, after today's assembly about the census, I just want to make sure that folks out there understand that starting the week of the 12th of March, you should look for, look in your mailbox because there will be a mailing from the census that tells you how to take the census. This is the first time that the census is largely going to be done online. And that may be something that we all find very useful if this COVID-19 stuff gets worse, that we can do it online without having to answer the door. But the census is really important. The last time around, we missed about a million kids under age five. And when we miss a child, when we miss anybody, it costs the state about $2,900 in federal grants that we don't get. So if we don't count a five-year-old, we don't count them, get a chance to count them again until they're 15. So it is really important that we all get the word out that the census is safe, easy, and important. All right. So now we have a presentation on the Connecticut Seal of Bilinguality.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Wanda Lequar, ESL bilingual and world language coordinator for the district. And this is my partner at the high school.
I'm Marissa Cartier. I'm an ESL teacher at the high school.
We have a short presentation, about 100 slides on the Seal of Bilinguality. No, we promise you, it's very short.
It's so scary. About to start my timer.
It's very short. We all know that the importance of language and the research behind what learning more, knowing more than one language does to our brains. By the way, I forgot to introduce my other counterpart, Christina Moran, who's a district coach.
I just heard it's going justice.
Yes. So I'm here to talk about the seal today. I know that I have a soft voice, but if you can hear me, just let me know. I can scream as my daughters. We live in a globalized world where travel is very easy and communicating with someone in another part of the world is just a click away. Therefore, knowing a second language is extremely important. Not only does it help us with traveling, but it's extremely important in the work world. It's also a career booster. Here you have a couple of bullets about what research repeatedly shows, that knowing a second language supports academic achievement and improves, actually really improves, the first language. It also helps with the cognitive and also affects attitudes and beliefs about other languages and deepens connections to other cultures. And I know Superintendent Sarah, that you're making connections here with our portrait of the graduate because it really falls nicely. But research out there, a little bit more about what learning a second or third language can do, in addition to boosting brain power, it improves memory, enhances the ability to multitask, sharpens the mind, keeps the mind sharper for longer, enhances decision-making, improves performance in other academic areas, and of course, helps us in networking and provides better career choices. The purpose of the seal. The seal, for the student, it recognizes the value of language diversity. It encourages the study of languages and provides recognitions for our ELs about the value of learning English while maintaining their primary language. And this is huge for our EL population. And also, for what it means for the community, is it certifies that the student is completely bilingual, which means not only the student can speak, but can read and write that second The seal was, was the, it was legislated in 2017. And these are the districts in Connecticut right now that are participating in the Seal of Bilinguality. Right now, 38 states in the nation participate, including the District of Columbia. As you can see, we're ahead of Hartford, Bridgeport, Willimantic, and Waterbury because currently, as far as we know, they're not participating in awarding the Connecticut Seal of Bilinguality. So there's 170 districts in Connecticut, 32 are participating in awarding the seal, and we're one of the 32. Seal attainment criteria, English, students have to meet all graduation requirements. And for the other language, they need to demonstrate proficiency at or above... they need to demonstrate proficiency at or above a mid-intermediate level, as outlined by the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages. And this qualifies, like I said before, that students are bilingual in two languages. This slide talks about the assessments that we use for ensuring that they attain the seal. Currently, we're using the Apple, and we have another slide that will tell you how many languages we can use with the Apple test. Last year, we only used the, we only used the Apple test, and we also used the AP Spanish test as a venue to receiving the seal. But we realized that it really wasn't equitable because the AP test results come after graduation. So we were having students that were meeting the criteria, but were not getting awarded the seal because we were receiving the results too late. So now we're using the Apple. We also have the OPI, or the Oral Proficiency Interview. Now, we have a student, and Ms. Cartier, you can talk about this, we have a student who speaks Twi.
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 She's from Ghana.
And currently, we're looking at her, she's a potential to get tested with the OPI to get the Seal of Bilinguality. So these are the different venues. As you can see, that we also have the ASL proficiency interview, the sign language proficiency. So there's a lot of different things and different students that can attain the seal of bilinguality.
So we're trying to look at students who even speak low-incidence languages, and so we want it to be as equitable as possible for them. If you look here on this screen, you can see that Apple does assess many languages, but not all the languages that are within our district. And so we are going to use other assessments to make it equitable for those students that do speak a low-incidence language.
Next slide. So here we have all the, what the Apple supports and the Portrait of the Graduate, how they And there's some things here that we can talk about. The Apple test, there's a cost for the Apple test, it's $20 per student, but Superintendent Sarah is covering the cost for the Apple test. Last year, we had nine students attain the Seal of Bilinguality. Currently, we have a running list and we're targeting about 100, over 100 students.
It's 182 right now as possible candidates. Now, whether or not they, the assesses being bilingual or not is a different story, but we're looking at our bilingual and bilingual students.
But over time, when they know that that's criteria, more kids come, right? The more you have, the more you come.
And the conversations that we've had with students in trying to recruit them is heartwarming. Their eyes brighten, they feel somewhat validated because it's their heritage that we're assessing, actually, their language, and so they feel embraced by our celebrating their bilinguality.
So as you can see, the ACTFO's national standards for foreign language are aligned with the Common Core standards. These standards provide students with college career and world readiness skills. The skill set assessed by Apple is in alignment with our Portrait of the Graduate guiding principles. As you can see, communication is at the core of Apple, no pun intended, as well as the core of our guiding principles. You need one form or another to communicate to meet the criteria we identified in the Portrait of a Graduate. It's all about communication, I think.
We spoke a little bit about the Apple being equitable. We can ask for accommodations based on a student's IEP or 504 plan. The Apple is somewhat conducive to it in that there are four portions or components of the Apple, like any language, reading, writing, listening, and speaking. The only portion that is timed is the speaking, and so we can make accommodations for those students that would need an extended period of time for their oral prompt response. Things that students can do only while taking the test is change the font or the color for those students that are perhaps visually impaired or colorblind. Other than that, there are many other things that we can do as far as accommodations. Again, with being equitable, we can assess students' 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. Ninth graders are not seen by the state as eligible to be assessed for the Seal of Bilinguality. We do intend on offering the Apple and OIP, or whatever the case may be, to not only New Burton High School students, but Satellite Careers Academy students, Brookside students, and Transitional Center. I kind of have the privilege of administering a lot of the last links to our higher education, to our high school students. And so when I'm administering the last, I'm kind of thinking back, okay, is the student eligible? Do I think he or she would be good for the Apple? And so we do have a running list of students at Satellite Careers, and we're really trying to make it as equitable as possible for all our grades 10th, 11th, and 12th students. What we're doing to promote is this right here. We're starting this evening by informing you all of what the Connecticut Seal of Bilinguality is. Tomorrow, Ms. Liqueur and I will be meeting with all middle school and high school guidance counselors and informing them what the seal is, informing them what an eligible candidate is, and asking for their help in identifying and recruiting these students. As far as the high school, we will inform all teachers of this as well, but we want to pay particular attention to our world language and ESL teachers because they are most likely to have these students within their classroom. Additionally, we would like the collaboration of the Registration Office and the Welcoming Center because we can ask questions when students register about their home languages. Within the World Language Department at New Burton High School, we are bringing back two oldie but goodie courses. We're bringing back Spanish for Heritage Speakers, and this is for those students that are bilingual but not yet bilingual. So this would be a great place to put these students that need to kind of like polish their bilinguality skills, and then they can go on to Spanish for Spanish speakers. Here, students in this course are already bilingual, but maybe we just want to kind of improve their bilinguality skills a little bit. Heritage is a prerequisite for Spanish speakers, but we will look at each student to see where they would best fall. That is not to say that only Spanish speakers will be assessed because, as we said earlier, we have Arab students, Twi, a lot of different languages. Polish. Additionally, we are trying to make it somewhat seamless in the World Language Department. We generated a new rubric for the Listening and Speaking portion that is connected to ACTFO, which is our national standards. And thankfully, ACTFO is the company that produces the Apple, so it's all kind of seamless for us. They are all interconnected with Common Core and the Portrait of the Graduate as well. And we are in the process of completing our reading and writing rubrics as well. This is just an example of an AP-level rubric for a world language course. The blue are the skills that the students need. We thought we shouldn't stop there. The green are little hints or tips that students can use to actually progress to the next proficiency level. And even at the highest level of advanced, students still have tips and tricks in order to increase and improve their bilinguality because our language can, is always evolving, isn't it? If you look all the way to the right, the intermediate mid, this is where students would have to score in order to be eligible to receive the Connecticut Seal of Bilinguality. So in a nutshell, what we're trying to do is to equitably identify eligible candidates for the Connecticut Seal of Bilinguality. We're assessing their bilinguality skills and hopefully awarding them the seal upon And just for fun, here's pictures of our first recipients from last year. You can see Ms. Liqueur courting students. She is modeling our beautiful cord, and it's a vibrant, it's a vibrant purple and teal. We looked at all the colors that the various honor societies have at the high school level, and we decided on purple because purple is traditionally known for, to represent wisdom, and teal represents communication. So we thought how fitting for our bilingual students to have wisdom and communication represented in the colors of our cord. So as Ms. Liqueur mentioned, our world is increasingly interdependent, and language holds the power to better connect us. It enriches our lives, it broadens our horizons, it makes our life experiences that much richer, and it connects us. I know I've seen time and time again, parents and students come in and they have difficulty, there's a language barrier, and then you find that one person who can speak, and their eyes instantly shine.
Canadian.
Yep. They smile, they feel instantly understood, accepted. And so, language is very powerful, and we are really honored, I think, to be able to help implement this within the district.
It's very exciting for us. If the seal is on the diploma, but it's also in the credit transcript, there's, and there's a space so that if it's electronic, we can also, so the student will have that option.
It will follow them.
In the transcript, it will follow them.
And the Connecticut, the State of Connecticut does have a database where it does keep all of its recipients' names and information, should a company reach out to them asking, do you have someone who is bilingual in, you know, said language?
It's part of the reporting that we do from our department every year.
No, I'm just imagining the video done by students to show an orientation about all the different languages and the different cultures represented in the school and how this Seal of Bilinguality would recognize their skills and tell the world that they're
The thing that moves me the most as a second language speaker is that this really reinforces the notion for students that your first language is important. You know, you can't learn English and just talk that other language away. It's important that you keep both and that you maintain both. That's an asset for our students. And what better place than New Burton to be able to do that and do it well and, you know, serve all the students that deserve that, that can attain this award.
And a side note, I want to share that I myself was a kindergarten ESL student within the city of New Burton at North End, and it's kind of like full circle to me to be able to help other ESL students and bilingual students achieve such a wonderful award. Any other questions?
I have comments.
Really?
No. So, I mean, you both know this is near and dear to me, so, I mean, as soon as I got on the board, I brought that up to Nancy and said, what are we doing, who's getting it? And whatever some of that process started, we established the policies to make sure that it happened, you know, just before you came on board, Wanda. So I want to say thank you for your presentation. I'm glad that the asset of another language is being elevated again in this city. We talk about what is good about New Britain and what is unique, and that's one of the most amazing things, is our multiculturalism and our multilingualism, and for a little bit, that got lost and not as elevated. In the state, so there are 30-something states, Connecticut was the 26th, and some of the issues that have come up, I present on this often, are some of the unintended consequences. And so from all those cities that you saw, I'm really happy to hear that New Britain is putting that focus on our English learners as well, because one of the unintended consequences is that many places are really just focusing on their foreign language learners, monolingual English-speaking, American children who are taking Spanish or Italian or French, and not necessarily targeting or offering to ESL students as well. And so, you know, it's great to hear that that is such an important focus, again, because we're showing our families and our communities that what you come with is an asset to us as well. So I appreciate all that. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment that it really stood out to me that in so many things, we end up near the bottom, right? But out of 169, 170 districts, the fact that there are only 30 that even have this in place, and that we're one of the ones that has it in place, and the fact that, you know, I know, the first year we started, we really didn't, you know, it took a while to get this going, but having nine students last year who received it, and hopefully more this year, and to see that program grow, that's just a list of the number of cities who have adopted it and have it on the books that they can do it. I'm curious as to what their numbers are as well, you know, is this something, because I think this is, like Dr. Sim said, this is something where really we can be at the forefront, and it also helps close that gap that we're talking about bringing our own students back, you know, and so having our, having more students who come back to our district who can represent and relate to multiple cultures as teachers would be a great thing to have too. The more we can build these programs up.
And as most states adopt it, because actually, all but two states right now have either adopted it or are in process in legislation, so it will happen, this is going to be something, another competitive step to college entrance. And so if you think about that, you know, when someone's looking holistically at a college application, same two things, but this child has a Seal of Bilinguality and this one doesn't, that's going to be a competitive edge. So the fact that we didn't wait until, you know, retroactively trying to do it to compete, we're ahead of that, is also a big, a big positive thing for our students.
Right. And we have eliminated the barriers with Superintendent Sarah letting us, you know, cover the cost of the testing, which is huge for us and for our kids, so it's all about...
It's $20.
Right. For us, I mean, for us.
Right. So now the job is motivating the students early on so that, you know, they keep their language and take the test.
I just need 180 of them. I'll be interested to see. I thank you for organizing all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention.
And I do just want to acknowledge that we have, I think it's for Alderman, I can't see quite every, so Alderman Rosado, Alderman Savedra, Aldersburg, Alderman Salerno, and Alderman Santiago. Anybody else hiding back there?
I didn't see Santiago.
He's behind the podium.
Right.
Wait later, Nancy.
Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda.
Lights, please.
Lights. Okay.
No, I'm not thinking I want to take off the agenda tonight. I know.
Anybody else have anything to take off the consent agenda?
No.
Whoa.
Say it's approved before Gail gets a chance.
I know, hold on, wait, wait. One more plan, one more plan.
Gail, there's never a rotation.
No, we're good. We're good, all in hand.
Consent agenda is approved. Let's move on to new business.
Motion to approve a memorial bench at Jefferson Elementary School.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to explain this to the board, we do have a policy around, we adopted a policy around naming areas within the school, and Ms. Salerno reached out to me, asking about, there's a bench that the Jefferson PTA had raised funds for, and it's, Ms. Salerno, could you refresh my memory, who it's in memory of?
Mrs. Lee.
Mrs. Lee.
Yeah, yeah, and so they had raised that, and they, the question had come up, is that naming an area in the school? And we've done memorial benches before, and, but just to make sure that everyone on the board was okay with it, we thought it is better for it to just come here for a quick approval and explain why. It's not naming an area in the school, it's just a bench they want to put on the property. I didn't think it would be an issue, but again, I'd rather err on the side of caution. So that's why I put it forward, I think it makes sense to approve it, they've raised all the funds for it, they're not looking for anything from us.
And Wayne worked in the Family Resource Center at Jefferson for quite a while.
Many years.
Yes. All right. Is there a second?
There was.
There was a second, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. The next is the district-wide calendar.
Motion to approve the 2021, 2020, 2021 school calendar as presented in our board package.
Second.
All right, discussion?
My kid is really upset that we're now starting after Labor Day this year, so I had to explain that Labor Day is extremely late, the seventh, so that's like a day near Halloween, and without that to anybody.
Can I just have it too? What you have here is really from our last community forum, actually two community forums ago, our families all weighed in on what the dates were that they wanted, and, and everything that they recommended, we went through cabinet, and it is what it is. So, it's the communities who wanted them before Labor Day. Dr. Sims, did you tell your daughter?
Yeah, trust me, I wanted to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, let's move on to high school graduation date.
Everybody's waiting for that, sorry, that was me doing trouble.
Motion.
I don't have the actual...
We don't have the actual dates, we can't remember.
Monday, June 27th.
I had a Monday?
One explanation?
At what time?
I probably don't want an explanation, but I know like some...
At what time?
Mr. Pierce.
Eleven AM. So, Mr. Pierce, we jumped in, but there was...
Just a quick point of order. Motion to approve a graduation date for the high school of Monday, June 22nd at eleven AM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now we can discuss.
There was considerable input from the PTO that Saturday created some barriers, so, well, there was some initial response around Saturdays, it had some positive, especially the Saturday of Father's Day weekend, there was a strong push, especially from the PTO, that they would prefer it on Saturday, we are anticipating, although it's still March, the last year's school being Friday, the nineteenth, even if the last day goes beyond, we know it's not going to be more than one or two days, so we're comfortable with Monday. The PTO strongly preferred Monday on Saturday.
So just for the cameras, the PTO...
So if you're interested in joining the high school PTO in the future, they're always looking for more members, and then you get to weigh in on fun things like this. So clear your calendar for the all-night grab party for June 23rd, right? You have to have that day off. Oh, to have the day off. But it's a night off. It's the night off, so you go into the next day. I usually pull an all-nighter and then work, and, ooh. It's rough.
Okay, so, any further discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I abstain? No.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we approve. Okay, it's moving on to academics and bid waivers, or doing bid waivers? Item D, new business.
Motion to approve a bid waiver and purchase order for Foundation's training materials from Wilson Language Training in the amount of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seven and forty-two cents.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I know that we've, we've put money towards this, for Wilson is something that we use with a lot of our language acquisition students. I, I'm happy going forward with it, but if there ain't questions, I'm sure there's someone here who could address them.
Mostly with special education students. For Wilson.
Wilson, yes.
The foundation materials.
Yes.
And then the, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's twenty-one thousand is for foundations. Right.
Tier one.
All right, any further discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, next one is partnership contract.
E. Motion to approve a contract MOU between the Consolidated District of New Britain and Marist College.
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
Salerno was getting up to explain, I was like, I didn't know you were there.
Greetings.
It totally looked at the way he was talking, I was like, I think it's at Marist.
Just a question, is this, if I'm understanding, this is for superintendent?
Student teacher.
Student teachers, okay, that's what I thought. Is it internships as well, or just student teachers?
I believe it's just student teachers.
It's just student teachers, the more that, you know, Connecticut students go out of state, the more they want to come back and teach in New Britain, and they're opting to come to New Britain to do their student teaching experience. So, we're thrilled to have another MOU with an out-of-state college, so they just, they just keep on coming in.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Yeah?
Motion to approve a contract between the New Britain Board of Education and the Greater New Britain Teen Pregnancy Prevention Incorporated, Pathways Cendares, in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Questions, discussion?
Can I just mention a little bit? So this is a partnership, it is for an alternative expulsion site for some of our students, no more than eight to ten students, we actually have a school district special education teacher who is working out of there now. The ten thousand dollars really is part rental, but the other part is the services that the staff at Pathways will provide, as well as our staff member. I think for us, having alternatives to expulsion are different sites for our students depending on their need, is important, and we felt connecting some of our students to the community, because this is where they'll live, probably following graduation, and they'll have a connection outside of the school district to connect with. We have really good partnerships with Pathways, I know Sarah Harris is on the board there, as well as Janice Braga-Malls, we have a few of our staff members who are board members at Pathways, and this has been in the works for the last few months, and we just want to make sure the language is right in the contract, and that we have eight to ten students who will be, I think we have eight going there.
Maybe starting with five.
Five, okay, so five will be going there. We were just waiting for your approval to begin this partnership.
Just as a point of clarity, the approval is for ten thousand dollars, but it's a thousand dollars per student that we send, correct?
It's twenty-five hundred per month, so fifteen hundred is for rental, and then a thousand dollars per month is for the...
Services provided.
Okay, so we have...
This takes us to, yeah.
So we have up to ten slots, it's not on a per student basis, it's...
Correct, that's correct.
Okay.
And we chose the ten, just because we didn't, we thought that that's even a large number, you know, we'd like to kind of live between seven and ten students.
And just also for clarifying, because I know it could be confusing from the name, the name of the group, the Great New Britain Teen Pregnancy Prevention Incorporated, is just the official incorporated name of Pathways Cendares, so it's not targeted specifically.
To our students, to our parents, that is correct.
Yeah, I just want to make that clear.
It's prevention.
Yeah.
Okay, I, G.
We need to vote on that one. Any further questions on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries, okay.
Motion to approve revision to chief talent officer job description.
Second.
Okay, we talked about this in personnel. Any questions about this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
H, motion to approve revision of chief facilities and special projects office and job description.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this one?
We're taking up the special projects?
Yes.
Okay, just because the draft isn't here and I couldn't remember.
Yeah, I mean, I can explain why.
No, no, I'm good.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next one?
Okay, motion to approve new job description for manager of safety communications.
No, turn this one.
Is there a second?
Second.
She's right.
Okay, any questions about this one? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next one, Jay.
Motion to approve new position for family school liaison for smaller elementary schools.
Second.
Okay, is there a discussion on this one?
No, I just, I'm going to reiterate that people love these positions, if you don't know who they are, or like, reach out to your family school liaisons, they're like, I don't know, people love them, everybody I talk to, like, I met so-and-so, what's his name, Luis from the high school, they love him.
Everybody knows Luis.
I know, that's true.
I just informed to note that this is currently funded out of our SIG grant.
Yes, yeah.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, next.
Okay, motion to approve new positions at New Britain High School for a school council.
Second.
Okay, is there a discussion on this one?
It says that it's grant-funded, but it wasn't specified which grant, do we know which grant this is coming out of?
Commissioners Network.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners Network.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Next.
Okay, next one. L, new position requests for para-educator for Holmes Elementary School, and this is two position.
Second.
I'm looking at my finance guy over there, because we didn't review in committee, so it's too new, right?
I don't think they knew, I think, didn't he say one, there was a half, one and a half already?
Yeah, are you okay with that? This is really for our Bridges, this is for our Bridges, which is a district-wide program that's housed at Holmes, for our Bridges students. We did go over this, it was in personnel.
These were, I can see, these are, we've identified around ten or eleven students who are high-functioning, autism children who are in the Bridges program, and this program is not appropriate for them. So, we picked around a bunch of the different ideas on how to best support these kids, so instead of coming up with another program, or another classroom, let's say, what we decided to do is hire some parrots, several parrots that could support these kids, children in the mainstream, okay? They're going to be trained by our new BCPA that came on, and she will be working with these parrots to collect data, we'll review that data on a monthly basis, and then at the end of the year, we're going to make a determination, you know, can these children now be mainstream along, without that additional support, we need to look at an autism program, but we found that to keep them in the current setting was inappropriate. So this is a way to support them, and also to save money at the same time, for this and the next one. So when I say there's about ten or eleven students, there was about five or six over at Holmes, and a few more over at the...
All right, any further questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, next.
Okay, M, approve new position request for para-educator for Bridges at Chamberlain School.
Second.
Okay, have we heard enough? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, next.
Motion to approve revised policy 411.3, process for hiring head coaches.
Second.
So just to look at this, you can see the highlighted marks, a lot of it's just updating the language a little bit, just making things a little bit more clear, some of the orders were just rearranged, again, just making it more clear what the process is, and then one big change is in E, a committee appointed by the superintendent made up of a minimum of the coordinator of athletics and high school principal, or their designee, will interview the candidates to determine the best candidate for the position. That was because in some cases, like, for some head coaches, it's not as big, there's not many, as many applicants, there might just be two applicants, there might not be the same level of community engagement on it, as opposed to something where it could be a very more, like, there's a lot of applicants and a lot of community interest as well. Same thing, just clarifying F, that it's the committee then recommends a candidate to the superintendent, and then that also goes through the Director of Personnel and Talent Development, because, again, like, in the case of where it's a teacher, like Ms. Sarah said, and again, that was just really, that was always part of it, but it is just updating it to be Director of Personnel and Talent Development, instead of Chief Academic Officer and Chief Human Resources Officer, because those are just, you know, updating terminology. We removed the term blue sheet, because we haven't had blue sheets in years, and then again, just, the rest is pretty much the same. So you can see the changes there. I'd like to motion that, usually with policies, we postpone them for a second reading, so I'd be happy to answer any questions about this, or we can postpone it for, to the next meeting for approval.
What was E. Pryor?
I believe E. Pryor just read the coordinator of athletics and the high school school principal will interview candidates to determine the best candidate for the position.
Yeah, so it's just added language, if I mean, so if you can see, it's not, there's nothing crossed out, it was the clarifying that a minimum of, so if you add, I mean, that was always the case, that that implied the minimum, but just to clarify that piece.
Make it more explicit.
So nothing is a change, per se, it's like, human resources is not called that anymore, so now it says Talent Development Office, and, you know, coordinator of athletics is really the Talent Development Office that manages that, so that's why that's crossed out.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's the name.
And again, the change to F is, again, in the case that the superintendent does appoint more people to the committee, then it's not just the coordinator of athletics and high school principal, it's the committee who's forwarding a recommendation.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. And so we will hold this over for a second reading, the next meeting?
Yeah, motion to postpone it to our April, April meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion table, or to postpone? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Motion to approve policy 521, equal opportunity employment, nondiscrimination.
Second.
And this, really, we're just adding language around gender identity, because Connecticut laws around nondiscrimination have changed and updated to include gender identity, so our policies should reflect current state law, and we're also seeing it at the federal level, so that's the only addition to this.
This is a pretty minor change, do we need to, or do we need to?
I feel it's probably, just for sake of consistency, putting it off to our next, because we're bound by the state law anyway, but I'd favor a motion to postpone, just so we're internally consistent.
Motion to postpone, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion carries, let's move on to the next one.
Motion to approve, motion to approve changes to policy 2151, recommendations for administrative positions.
Second.
On this one, we just corrected the his/her to there, because again, it's just more easily doable, and then again, in our practice, we've not had a second, a separate meeting for the study session, as long as I've been on the board, it's always been usually part of the meeting, or at the beginning of the meeting, so we're just, again, changing the policy to reflect what our practice is, which is that, you know, there's a study session, an executive session, where the board has a chance to review of candidates for administrative positions, and that that happens prior to the public vote. So again, it's just minor clarification to make sure it actually follows our, our practice.
Okay, so there's a motion to postpone that to the next meeting?
Yeah, motion to postpone to our April meeting for a second reading.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Motion to approve changes to our board policy 4131, professional staff development.
Second.
This one is a very large change, because the policy had not been updated since 1986. So a couple of years.
We've had people who, who are talking.
I was going to say, there may be a few board members. But the replacement language, you can see, it's on the pages below the strike through, and this is coming straight from CAPE, and there have been many changes at the state level that are in law, and we've, we've always had to comply with the state law around professional development, but this is again, just making our policy match. The previous policy was just very vague, and left a lot of it to be put in, you know, what the law is. You can see on the second page, I believe, there's a strike through and markup in the CAPE policy, where, again, this is just to align it to our practice of, it's the superintendent who makes appointees to the PDEC committee, that's often the case in larger districts, and so that's something that the board is allowed to do, which is distinct that, just because it keeps us out of the politics of putting individual people on that committee. And then, other than that, we kept it very similar to the CAPE policy, just because they do keep it updated with state law, so.
Ma'am.
If there are no questions, I'd again, propose postponing.
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and our last.
Motion to approve changes to policy 5134, students who are pregnant, married, and/or parents.
Second.
Again, this is one that, slightly more recent, 1992. And honestly, there's, while the policy that we're proposing to replace it is a little bit longer, a lot of the spirit was in the original one, it's just updated to be a little bit more inclusive. One thing that, even in CAPE's policy, we clarified, is that there are often, especially when you're talking about parents, there may be single fathers who have responsibilities for young children who are still in high school, and the way CAPE's policy was previously written, and the way our policy was previously written, it was very much only focused on the mothers, and, you know, not for nothing, one of, one of the reasons you sometimes, you know, get that sort of, like, fathers in the, in the, you know, law and in policies like this aren't often as recognized, even in the workplace today, but that's a soapbox, I'll save for another time. But we're looking to update it, and again, the, the things are just making sure that students who are, you know, pregnant, or who are parents with small children who are still in our schools have access to, potentially to adult ed at an age younger than 16, which technically, they're normally not allowed to, except in this case of this policy. Also making accommodations for them to be in school, or also looking to provide accommodations within the school day for pregnant students, as well as parents, and the services that we provide as wraparound. So I think this just helps, helps enable us to better serve the students who may otherwise get lost in the system.
Okay, entertain a motion to postpone this to the next meeting?
So.
To postpone to the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, did we have any other business?
Mr. King.
Yes, I should add this to board report, it slipped my mind, I was able to, a couple weeks ago, visit both DiLoretto and Smalley schools. DiLoretto, Mr. Ortiz, and a couple other staff members, we were able to show me what they were doing around attendance and the improvements that they've been working on, very impressed by that, and then I was able to meet with Mrs. Flidgen over at Smalley for a couple hours, she was generous enough to give me her time and even show me all the things that they were doing around community parent engagement, Mail Here Again, that they did in February, which was wildly successful, a lot of people attending, and also the trunk or treat that they did back in October, again, wildly successful, and the Facebook page is just pumping out constantly updates with thousands of views for a school that has fewer than 700 students, so really pulling in that North Oak community, and it's exciting to see what happens, that my family, have some family that live in North Oak, and my mom grew up there, and so excited to see that neighborhood revitalized, and Smalley's been part of that, so.
Okay, any further? Entertain a motion to.
Motion to adjourn.